With that, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council of May 7, 2024 to order. And if we could have roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Man.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Here.
Okay. Pleased to have with us this evening Jerry Jambasian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 Las Tunas Drive, who will be providing tonight's invocations. So Jerry, everyone, please stand and please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we once again come before you tonight asking for your blessings on this council meeting. I pray that you would grant our mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members and the staff with the decision-making ability that you have gifted each one of them with. We live in a troubled world with turmoil outside and inside our borders. I pray that you would give wisdom to our elected officials, including federal, state, county, and city. As I interview our students, so one thing they say over and over is they want world peace. Let us learn from our children. Tonight, we honor our Temple City Older American of the Year and celebrate the accomplishments of the Committee on Aging. Father, I would be remiss if I did not remember those armed services members around the world that protect our freedom and democracy, including our sheriffs, fighter-fighters, and first responders. So Lord, we commit this meeting to you and for your glory and honor. Amen.
Amen. Okay. And then we will move to our pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Dexter and Gia from Clementon School to come on up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so there's the flag, and you guys can just stay right there, and then when you're ready to get us going, go ahead.
Okay. Everyone, please stand. Just people, all right, so everyone, your hand over your heart, and now, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good job. And they didn't even have to rehearse that. I just asked them. So good job. So thank you, Jerry, and thank you Dexter and Gia for helping us out. Okay, we are now going to move into our item five, our ceremonial matters. We have a few this evening, and we are so pleased and honored, of course, to start with our own L.A. County Assessor Jeff Prang, who is actually here this evening with us, taking time out of his, I'm sure, very busy schedule. And so without further ado, Jeff, I'll have you come on up, and I know you have a presentation, any other words you would like to share with us. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's great to be with you. I appreciate your indulging me and allowing me to come and offer a few remarks about work that's happening in our office that affects your constituents in the city of Temple City. I know that you're probably thinking, what better way to get your meeting off and to an exciting start than having a speech from the county property tax assessor?
As long as you didn't bring any bills with you, we're good.
I brought envelopes.
Okay.
If you brought your checkbook. But I always like to, many of you have probably heard me talk about this before. The people watching at home or in the audience probably have it, but I'm actually not the guy who collects taxes. The guy who collects taxes, he's got a really intuitive title. He's called the tax collector. So that's just a little bit, little common confusion, but I think probably the only way I could add a little bit more excitement into your evening if I was maybe the mosquito commissioner. But all joking aside, let me just give you a little bit of background about the office and what we do. As the L.A. County Assessor, I'm one of three elected officials that represent the entire county. The other two, everybody knows. That's the sheriff and the district attorney. I'm kind of the forgotten third one. But I am responsible for managing the nation's largest local property assessment agency. I've got about 1,400 employees, and we're responsible for determining the value for about 2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments annually. Together, they are valued at $2 trillion. That's with a T, and it generates about $25 billion in property taxes, which is allocated to schools, cities, and the county and other local governments. We are not specifically a revenue department, but revenue is a direct byproduct of the work that my office does. Property taxes that are based on the values determined by the assessor's office make up about a quarter of the county's general fund and 40% of funds for local schools. So in a lot of ways, the assessor's office is one of the most important local government agencies, because no other government agency gets to do their job until we've done ours. And if we don't do our job thoroughly and completely, then revenues that should be collected are left on the table. The way the system works, it's very complicated. It was designed for optimal public confusion, I think. But when you buy a house, you record a deed. Or if you do new construction, you pull a permit from the city. Those deeds and permits then come to my office, and my appraisers determine the value, which we add to what's called the assessment roll. That data is then turned over to another department that almost nobody's ever heard of, the auditor controller. They're actually the ones that tell you how much you owe. But it's the treasurer tax collector that sends the bills and collects the payments. The primary job of the assessor is the production of what we call the annual assessment roll, which is essentially just the inventory of all taxable property. It includes both land and improvements, although it also includes business property such as furniture, fixtures, equipment, and machinery, although we also assess commercial and general aviation aircraft, mobile homes, boats, and for some odd reason, even racehorses. Assessment roll serves a couple of critical functions. Obviously, it's the basis for the property tax system, although it's also an important tool for local government. They use this in anticipation of property taxes as they're developing their budgets, and it also provides somewhat of an economic indicator as to the health of the real estate market. We work on a fiscal year. Our year ends at June 30th, so we're in the middle of our busy production season. But I can report that last year's assessment roll showed the 13th consecutive year of property value growth in L.A. County. Property values grew about 5.91% last year, and it appears as though we're going to have positive growth again this year. It's too early to come up with a specific projection, but it's probably going to be somewhere around the 5% countywide. Let me give you a little bit of details about what's going on in the market specifically here in Temple City. For 2023, Temple City's total assessed value, that's the assessed value of all taxable property, was approximately $6.3 billion. Property values grew citywide by 5% in 2023. In contributing to this assessed value are over nearly 9,000 single-family homes, about 462 commercial industrial parcels, for a grand total of over 10,000 taxable parcels. I've included a chart highlighting some of the updated median sales price for single-family homes in Temple City. And as you can see, the median sales price this month of a single-family home in your community is about just over $1 million. Keep in mind that this is approximately a 12% increase over median sales price one year ago at this time. Next door in Alhambra, median sales prices are around $888,000. It's a little bit, this is about 5% lower than the MSP last year at the same time. And I also put a couple of other cities in the area to give you an idea of what those homes are selling for. The fact that Alhambra had a bit of reduction doesn't mean they're losing value. That probably just deals with the specific types of properties that sold. Another issue I wanted to briefly talk about was Proposition 19. This is a relatively recent measure adopted by the people of California. The mayor was just telling me in his day job that this is a real headache for him. I could tell you in my day job, it's a real headache for me as well.
Yeah, I'm sure it's much more of a headache for you than it is for me.
Prop 19 does two things. One of them is really beneficial. The other one, I'll let you be the judge of it. The first thing, the beneficial part, is it allows anybody who's 55 years or older, somebody severely disabled, or the victim of a natural disaster such as a flood, fire, or earthquake, to transfer their tax base with them when they move and buy a new house. So if you bought your home in 1990 at a low rate, you can buy a new house, even when it's very expensive, and you can end up paying the same taxes on your new home as you were on your old one. It makes your property taxes portable. It allows you to move anywhere in the state to buy a home of any value. You can transfer that tax base three times. If you're married, you can transfer it six times. So it really is a great benefit to those who are over 55. The downside, the way they paid for these benefits, is they slashed and burned inheritance benefits. So under the old law, you could inherit your parents' home without being reassessed. And if your parents owned additional property, the first $1 million of it was exempt from reassessment. Under Prop 19, that all changes. Now, the only home that you can inherit, the only property you can inherit from your parents without reassessment is the home your parents live in. In order to qualify, you have to move into that home within 12 months and file the Homer's exemption. And additionally, there's a cap on how much value can be transferred. So, and this is impactful here in Temple City, since the median sales price is about $1 million, only the first $1 million is exempt from reassessment. Anything over that will be valued at market rate, and so you'll get a new, higher blended tax rate. It's pretty complicated. We have a lot of information on our website. It does take a while for us to process these exemptions because the legislature, in their wisdom, gave us a huge new workload, and they gave us zero money for personnel and resources, so it's kind of slowed everything down. But on a news that's a little bit better, let me talk about something else that we do in our office that deals with tax savings. My office manages a number of programs for seniors, veterans, the disabled, for nonprofits, to help save money on the property taxes. Last year, we helped all these entities save about $750 million in property taxes. The one that I want to point out for your community and for a lot of your residents is the Homer's exemption. Anybody who owns a home and lives in it qualifies for the Homer's exemption. We estimate that here in Temple City, that about a third of homeowners who qualify for this tax savings program don't sign up for it. And the reason they don't sign up for it is probably because they don't know about it. You only have to sign up once. It's an easy one-page form on our website. It'll allow me to reduce your assessed value by $7,000, which will save you about 70 bucks a year on your property taxes. We also have a program, it's not in the slide here, but we have a program. They're very concerned that we're not getting enough participation. It's for disabled veterans. If you're 100% disabled as a veteran, there is a very generous tax savings program available. Only about 4,000 people in the county apply, but San Diego, there's 16,000. So in our population, about four times higher than that. We should have a whole lot more. So if you're a disabled veteran and you have questions about whether you qualify for this tax savings program, please reach out to my office. One of the things I wanted to mention that gets a lot of folks in trouble with their assessment deals with what happens upon the death of a property owner. It is important that you tell us when you die.
Not tell you, but tell the office.
Somebody needs to tell us. Your estate, your heirs need to tell us, because the law says that we are required to be notified within 150 days of the death of a property owner. Failure to do so could create complications in any inheritance and estate planning. It's particularly important if you're going to file for Proposition 19 for parent-to-child tax benefits. This gets a lot of people in trouble. We ended up spending months trying to untangle those, so it's important that our office be notified upon the death of a property owner. Something that's a little bit more current that I want to mention deals with ADUs, accessory dwelling units. You all know that the legislature passed a bill a couple of years ago, Senate Bill 9, which essentially eliminated single-family zoning in California. It allowed anybody on a single-family property to build an ADU, or to split the lot into two lots and build up to four units on those two lots. ADU production has increased dramatically over the last couple of years. It's now consuming about 25% of our work and of our appraisers to assess these ADUs. Although there was a, I just saw in the paper this last week, that a judge ruled Senate Bill 9 is unconstitutional, so I'm certain that's going to be coming back before the legislature to try to fix those elements that the courts found unlawful. And just a couple, a couple of quick things before I wrap up. I did want to call your attention to a new program we just launched in the last year called the Assessor's eService Account. If you own property in L.A. County, you can now set up your own profile on our website. It will, it's a, will allow you to do a lot of services electronically that used to have to be done with paper or in person, such as doing a changing of your mailing address. But the most important feature of the Assessor's eService is something we call the homeowner alert. Everybody, I think, is aware that there's been increasing amount of real estate and title fraud, people attempting to steal property. One of the challenges that is, that we have under the existing structure is that anytime something is recorded against your property, such as a deed, or a lien, or a deed of trust, or a grant deed, you'll get a letter confirming that that's taken place from the registrar quarter, but it takes about 30 to 45 days. And if somebody's attempting to commit fraud against you, that may be too long. But now you can go, if you own property, you can now register your email address with our office, and anytime something's recorded against your property, you'll be notified by email within 48 hours. And if it's, if it's something that's supposed to happen, it's fine. If it's not, that will allow you to respond quickly. So I urge everybody in Temple City who owns property to go on our website, register your email address so we can keep you informed and help prevent you from experiencing fraud. And finally, we also, if you own property, the other service we provide, we have a very informative newsletter we send out every month. Gives you lots of tips about how to take advantage of programs and services that we provide, tips that everybody who owns property should know. So I think I've talked long enough. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you for letting me be here today. I'm happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate.
So I'm amazed that you actually got through all that in that little of a time, to be honest with you. Good job.
Thank you.
You must have been a politician at one time in your life.
I think I've given this speech maybe three or four thousand times.
Thousand times. Yeah, no question. You know, I know Assessor Prang won't say this, but you know, he came in to this office at a very difficult time, needless to say, in the assessor's office. And has done a phenomenal job in kind of changing the course of where it's going. And then, of course, they throw Prop 19 at you to boot, and but, you know, it's, you know, L.A. County's big, and you've got a big job ahead of you. There's no question. But I want to thank you, you know, as an estate planning attorney, I'm very familiar, of course, with Prop 19 and the office of the assessor's office. And so they're easy to work with. So I just want to pass that on to you, that there are people on the other line that you can talk to. So that makes it very helpful. Another thing, and I know Jeff stressed this as well, this eService is homeowner alert. I always tell my clients about that, and they're amazed. I can do that? Yeah. In fact, I did it last night. Five minutes it took that.
Super simple.
Very simple, very simple. You just go to the website, and it's right there, and you sign up, and it is a really good thing. So yeah, the homeowner alert is a great item. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So thank you. Any questions from council? Well, we have him captive here. You know? No, we're good? Yeah, they're all, they're all going to get home tonight and do that e-filing, I think.
I hope so.
Okay, so before you leave, we have a little bit of a thank you gift for you, and I know we want to get some photos out in front, so if you can indulge us for a minute.
Thank you very much.
We want to thank you very much. And how about a big round? So we can't let you leave without taking a swag bag of Temple City home. No cash in there, you know, but yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that. A lot of great information. And, you know, all I can say is, someone dies, see a lawyer. There's stuff that needs to be done. So, okay. All right. Next, we've got our proclamation of Older American Month, okay? You know, we do this every year, of course, and I've got a little script here that I'd like to read if you'll bear with me. Every May, the Administration for Community Living leads the nation's observance of Older Americans Month, a time to recognize older Americans' contributions, highlight aging trends, and reaffirm commitments to serving the older adults in our communities. The 2024 theme is powered by connection, which recognizes the profound impact that meaningful relationships and social connections have on our health and well-being. Temple City, of course, recognizes the vital role that connectiveness plays in supporting independence and aging in place by combating isolation, loneliness, and other issues. In addition, May is when we also honor our 2024 Temple City Older American of the Year. This year's recipient, I'm pleased to say and honored, is Annette Constantino, who I understand almost forgot tonight. So we're glad she made it and was reminded to be here. So Ms. Constantino is a standout representative of our older, of our older adult residents through her dedication to volunteering in the community. Over the years, Ms. Constantino has been an active volunteer with our local schools, Camellia Festival, and St. Luke's Catholic Church, and a member of the Women's Club of Temple City, and the Wandering Foot Quilt Guild. I gotta get, I gotta get some more information on that. Wandering Foot Quilt Guild, that sounds like a, yeah, I know, huh? Okay. Of course, she has used her extraordinary sewing expertise making dresses and outfitting the Camellia Festival Royal Courts, crafting banners for St. Luke's Catholic Church, and creating costumes, of course. If you've ever been to the Temple City High School musicals over the years, those are costumes that Ann has worked on. And I see Matt's over here in the audience, I'm sure, as part of that. So I'm sure he appreciates it as well. Ann has served as PTA president and held many positions at La Rosa, Cloverly, Oak Intermediate, and Temple City High School, contributing to enhance the student experience of all. She is caring, compassionate, and helpful. And of course, we're very honored and pleased to announce her as our 2024 Temple City Older American of the Year. You know, I'm thinking, to do all this stuff, it takes a long time to get there. So you've been doing a great job. I mean, that's a lot of stuff. So it gets me tired just thinking of it. So thank you so much for all you do. And I know that this is not where it stops. She will continue doing all these things, and if not more. So at this time, I would like to invite Ann to the dais to accept the proclamation, recognizing her as the Older American, as recognizing May as Older American Month in Temple City, and of course, her recognition as the Older American of the Year. And I would like to have council, Ruby, did you want to say, Ruby from our, I gotta give a shout out. Ruby, go ahead and go up to the podium if you'd like. Ruby, with our Parks and Rec Department, and of course, where's Adam? Adam's sitting over here, our Parks and Rec Director for getting this all put together. Did you want to say a few words? I'm sorry. Took all the, took all the thing from you, right?
No worries.
All right.
Just getting to know Annette, she's been a wonderful member of the community from all the stories that I've heard from her. So it's really a giving time for her to really be nominated for the Older American of the Year. So congratulations again.
All right. So let's go on up. Okay, come on up. And this is your opportunity to say a few words if you'd like as well.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for being here, if you're here, for me tonight. And I did, I did get my wires crossed, so that Older American is really observable. I want to thank a lot of these people because they actually make me look good. And so I do a lot of things because I just love sewing. So it's not work. It's, it's, it makes people happy. And I make hats, fascinators, and it's just because I'm a busy person. I don't know. But I feel very honored, and thank you so much for this wonderful title. And anything else I should say?
You're doing good.
You're doing great.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh.
Good job.
Wow, this is really.
All right, come on.
This is really cool.
Jerry, how do you want her to hold both together?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Mayor, if you, in the movie, it's kind of a family. Can we get everybody else up there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anybody else? The whole audience might come up. Come on up. Whoever wants to come up, who wants to be part of this, come on up. I know, are those for her?
Of course.
They're not for you.
I thought they were.
She's in the break. You guys were meeting in the break. She used to be in the break again. She was in last year, too.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to squeeze in. Come on in this way.
Did you ever get anybody out there?
That's good. See everybody's face. That's perfect. Okay.
Parks and Rec, you have something to do with that. Adam, you get in there.
Come on, come on.
Ruby, Ruby, come on.
Don't you Ruby say?
All right, here we go.
Look at Jerry.
Yep.
Look up here.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Everybody gets their pants and shirt.
Me, too?
Yes.
Alterations on the net.
Where's your business card, business card?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. You know, these are the kind of things we love to do up here. Fortunately, we have other business to attend to later this evening, but we've got one more item on our recognition items here. And, you know, I want to start by saying that Clementon School is like one of our best-kept secrets in Temple City. And the reason I say that is that, oh, did I miss somebody? Yeah. Do you mind if I go a little bit out of order? Is that okay with you? Since I already started?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a little thing here. I didn't even see it. I'm sorry. Kind of ties in with the thing.
Forget about it.
No, we'll forget about it.
We're not tired, you know?
Yeah, well, we gotta get a little break, you know, in between things. All right. So we're gonna go a little bit out of order because we've got, you know, people in the back. So as I was saying, Clementon School is kind of our best-kept secret in town. You know, we have always prided ourselves in Temple City for the schools we have, and we have great schools. There's no question about it. Clementon School is part of the Almani School District, but is located in Temple City. And tonight, we are going to be recognizing Clementon School for receiving not one, but two awards that we'll get into in a minute to kind of show what they're doing over there and how they're doing it. And the reason why it's here tonight is not only is it in Temple City, but Clementon School, as many of us know, has been a part of the community as well. They have, they have an after-school STAR program there from Temple City. They have our, they have an after-school star program there from Temple City. They host our Neighborhood Watch program every year. Every year, I'm invited to read to their fourth-grade class, which is a lot of fun, and been doing that for a number of years now. And on a personal note, I used to have my Little League practices there all the time. Of course, I can't do that anymore because I got it all closed up, which is, I understand. But when it was open, we'd have our Little League practice there. So Clementson School, great school, there's no question about it. And if you ever have the opportunity to go on campus for any reason, they have great facilities, they do a great job of what they do. So that's kind of a little background of why we're here tonight. And, you know, I just want to say that there are two awards, as I said. One is Clementson School is a recipient of what is called the California Distinguished School Award, given by the California State Department of Education to public schools within the state that best represent exemplary and quality educational programs. Only five to 10% of California schools are awarded this honor each year. And of course, one of those was our own Clementson. And if that's not enough, they also receive the Lighthouse School Designation, which honors the school's commitment to fostering a leadership culture among students and staff, nurturing environment, nurturing an environment where students lead their own learning and innovation within the school community. That's a lot. You know, what was that? Remember the, your, your State of the City, the little engine that could, that thing? Kind of reminds me of Clementson, the little engine that could. Because, not that they're little, but they're not a huge school, but they, they do an exemplary job. And so on behalf of the council, I want to call up their principal, Carlos Elsito, tonight to receive certificates of recognition for the school's accomplishments. Carlos, why don't you, before I go up there to present, if you want to say a few words, and anybody else that you have here that you would like to recognize as well?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and City Council. Just, just a little, kind of a forward here. I've known Mayor Chavez way before I became principal at Clementson School. And of course, if you know Tom, it was through Little League. At that time, maybe 15 years ago, I happened to be on the board for the Almani Little League, and Tom was over here at Live Oak Park, and we kept running into each other, and it was all about baseball. And then I became principal at Clementson. And lo and behold, down the street, Tom Chavez. And so he became a fixture at our school at many events, family picnics, read-alouds, you name it, right? And it's, it's been a really great relationship, let me tell you, with the city of Temple City, hosting, you mentioned it, you know, Neighborhood Watches, where I met Deputy Bowie and countless others, right? And so it's always been easy, you know, calling Brian Cook, you know, just helping us out with various issues. So it's been, it's been a wonderful relationship. And we really appreciate the openness and willingness to collaborate with us and helping us remain great. Great cities always recognize great education systems. And what better way to, it's so apropos, right? That you're recognizing us during Teacher Week, right? So where we celebrate our teachers, our educational system. So we really appreciate that. I do want to recognize Mrs. Wilson, who's here, who's one of our fantastic teachers. Mrs. Wilson. We have a few students here who were part of our Review Day, who are part of our student leadership. And that is, you met Gia and Dexter. We also have Leo, which is Gia's little brother. Leo's here. And then we have their mom, we have Dexter's mom here. We have Ms. Guo in the back, who's a Temple City librarian. We just happened to pop in, so perfect timing, right? But yeah, we do a lot at our school. You know, we, we are tiny, but we are pretty mighty. We just wrapped up our musical theater production of Lion King. And as you can tell, Dexter was Timon. And, and Gia was Rafiki. So, right? Nailed it, right? But we do do a lot, and we really appreciate this recognition, Mayor Chavez.
Well, you're well-deserving. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And so if I could get counsel to join me up in front, and we'll present these to you.
Can I recognize one more person?
Of course, go ahead.
Otherwise, I will be in trouble.
Yeah.
My wife is here.
Better.
Right, it's a good catch, good catch. My son and daughter are here also, Joaquin and Maya. Maya is also a Temple City employee. She works for Parks and Rec.
A lot of connections there.
Yes.
Well, thank you, congratulations, and well-deserved. So we've got actually one for each. So they can go in your office or wherever you want to put them. So congratulations, they're there. That one for the Distinguished School and one for the Lighthouse. And so, yeah, let's have everybody come on up, and we'll take a photo. You guys can go home and watch yourself on TV tonight. Get up in front, get in the front, get in the front. All right. Come on, everybody up, everybody from Clementson, come on up. Yeah, you gotta keep moving. Yeah, bring your, bring your family up, too. Yeah, hold on, one sec.
Real quick, this one real quick?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll bring everybody else in. One, two, and three. Jared, did you get it? Do you want to get it? Come on in. You guys on?
She works for the city, she should know better.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Great job. Well, that, that was, we have no time for anything else, sorry. We should end on a high note.
Just give me coffee and pie.
Yeah, there you go. All right, let's, let's give everybody a chance to, to get it good going and... All right, thanks, guys, we'll see you soon, take care. Okay. We will now move on to Item Six, our Public Comment. Item was not listed on the agenda. Oh. Why do I keep forgetting about you? It's Vince's job as Mayor Pro-Tam to remind me of these things. He was just gonna do that, so... And, you know, I'll have to say, and maybe it's just Freudian slip, but I actually had the, this distinct honor of attending a recent Committee on Aging meeting because I wanted to see kind of what's going on there. And what a great group. I mean, I was impressed by the, the people that were there. These are people that are, been around the community for a long time and do a great job. And I was very impressed. And so, without further ado, we are going to have an update from the Committee on Aging, okay? And we are pleased to have our committee chair, of course, there we know Carol Rodenbacher, and we have our vice chair, Liz Powell, who will give us an update on the Committee for Aging. So go ahead, turn it over to you.
Thank you. So before we present the reports this evening, he's already done that. Okay, I'll start from where they told me. Good evening, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. My name is Carol Rodenbacher, Chair of the Committee on Aging. Alongside me is the vice chair, Elizabeth Powell. Tonight, we will be presenting the end-of-the-year reports for 2022-23, which highlight the accomplishments of the committee. Now, before we present the reports, I would like to provide a brief background on the Senior Master Plan and the committee itself. The Senior Master Plan was created to identify issues that were impacting seniors in Temple City. In the Master Plan, 24 action steps were identified to serve as a guide for the city to enhance programs and services for seniors. As a result of the Senior Master Plan, the Committee on Aging came to be. And as you can see, we have a slide up here. The Committee on Aging was formally established in 2018. The purpose of the committee is to advocate for seniors and provide programs, activities, and services while working alongside the Parks and Recreation Department. The committee creates an annual report to present the progress that has been made on the Master Plan action steps throughout the year. For 2022, the committee focused on services that coincided with the reopening of onsite facilities. We wanted to highlight a couple of these accomplishments, beginning with the senior newsletter. The committee focused on creating a monthly publication for older adults for them to receive information about programs, excursions, and city events. Currently, there are 121 seniors enrolled in the newsletter, and since its inception, over 2,800 issues have been distributed. Another major accomplishment for the year was a new pickleball pilot program that was introduced for older adults. The pilot program began on Friday mornings with a small group of players. This pilot program grew over time and generated enough interest that we now have four new permanent pickleball courts at Live Oak Park.
In 2023, the committee focused on addressing more of the Master Plan action steps. The senior database, excuse me, databases were the accomplishments we would like to highlight. As of 2023, 154 Temple City residents have enrolled in the database, in part due to outreach efforts of the Parks and Recs Department and the Sheriff's Department. The purpose of this database is to be able to communicate with our older adult population in times of emergencies. An example of this was during the pandemic, when we used the database to make sure the senior population was well and relay critical resource support services. Another major accomplishment of the committee was to bring back the in-person congregate meal program at the Live Oak Park Community Center. Partnering with the YWCA, in-person meals returned in July of 2023, five days a week. On average, approximately 100 seniors participated in the meal program, which also allowed the expansion of in-person programs and services for the senior population. This concludes our presentation on the committees, excuse me, on the Committee on Aging's accomplishments for '22 and '23. We are excited to continue working with the city council, Parks and Recreation Department, and other partners to expand resources and programs in the senior community. And before I say anything, we do have applications for those that may be interested in joining our committee.
We have two positions open.
Thank you for your time this evening. And since you did join last time, you can come again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And if I know you're coming, I'll bring treats. With some pie and coffee.
Okay. That's fair.
Thank you.
That's fair. Just a real quick question. When is your application process, or is it open now? And how would they go about if they wanted to apply?
It is open now. I'll let Ruby...
Maybe Ruby can come on, yeah, give us a little more information on that so we get that out into the public.
So our applications are open now. The deadline to submit application is Friday, July 12, 2024, by 5:00 p.m. We will have the applications online. They can also submit them in person to the Live Oak Park Community Center, or they can email me their application, which my email is on the application as well, or the mail-in. So the address is also on the application.
And I believe the committee meets quarterly, is that correct?
It meets quarterly.
So four times a year?
Exactly, yes.
Perfect.
Four times a year.
Well, thank you. We'll see if we can get some, some good people on there for you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions from council to committee? No? All right.
I just want to thank you, and especially since Tom and I and Vince are the...
Qualify.
That's a nice way to put it.
Yes.
We're grateful that you, you know, we can now, we were much younger when we first started here, but we can take a look and see how valuable those things are also. And I just applaud you for taking the time to make things better for the seniors in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, good job. All right, well, that will end the fun for tonight. So you're all free to leave, and now we go into the non-fun stuff. No, all right. Just kidding, everything's fun. Okay. All right, well, next, then move on to Item Six, Public Comments. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Procedure to address the council is highlighted on the first page of our agenda. Anyone here wish to speak? Hearing none, I will now close public comments. Okay. We will now move to the Consent Calendar. Before we get a motion, I do have a request to pull Items 7I and 7L. And so I believe, Mr. City Attorney, we can take a motion now for all the rest, if there is any, do we have a motion? Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Yu.
Yes.
Mayor Chavez.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have Items 7I and 7L, and that request is coming from Don Tarran. Where's Don? Oh, there you are. I was looking for you, I thought you were over here already. So come on up, Don, and why don't we start with seven, Item 7I, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 24-5738, approving the installation of an always-stop sign control at the intersection of Garibaldi and Encinita. So, go ahead.
I am absolutely thrilled with the idea of the stop sign going in there. I drive up and down Encinita all the time. My concern is related to the red curbs that are being proposed.
Okay, but that's another item.
No, then this is... On this, on this one. I drove through that intersection on my way over here, and based on my understanding of this, it looks like the houses in that intersection are going to be losing their entire front parking lot. And if you lived in a house that you had a red curb and you were not able to park in front of your house or even across the street from your house, and you weren't notified beforehand without a chance to address it, you might be a little upset. So that was my comment with regards to that. I think that the, and, and one of those is not related to this one, but is that new house on Woodruff and Encinita, the multi-complex? They're not going to have any parking in front of it, for the same reason, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Do they have garages?
You live in Temple City, right?
No, but I mean, they're new, it's a new development.
The new development does, has onsite parking.
Are they three-car or two-car?
One thing is, you can't ask a question in response to a question. You have to answer the question first. So, anyway. No, there was questions going back and forth, not yours. Forget about it. All right, go ahead.
No, that was it, that one.
All right. Anybody else have anything on that?
No, Mayor, because I think there's, just to answer the question of concern the 40-foot red curb. The traffic study actually study the situation, and one of the, one of the concerns was sightline. Because if you come up to the intersection, you can't see across if there are cars parked there. So the report says they have done a line-of-sight analysis in the 40 feet, red curb was a result of their recommendations.
And I, I understand that. My, my concern is that driving through Temple City, there are a lot of intersections that are exactly the same way, that do not have red curbs.
And we will get to them at some point in time. Okay, we take them one at a time.
Maybe?
Okay, all right, so then, is that all you have to say on that item?
Yes.
Okay, did you, you had another item, though.
Did we talk about this?
Did we talk about this?
So, yeah. Well, you asked first. 7L, which is the intersection at Kaufman and at Woodruff Avenue.
An intersection near and dear to my heart. So that's the intersection that has the Historical Society on the corner, just up the block from here. The report actually reflects that it is a residential area, which it is, but the Historical Society is commercial. It's not residential. The board, I know, did not get any notification with regards to the study going on. The red curb that is the entrance to the hall actually impedes parking and drop-on, even if it's drop-on, drop-off of entrance to the hall. And the line of sight, which I did look at that, quite frankly, is impeded already by the tree that's there. So there's not any, there's not any value added to extending the line in front of the hall that far. That was, and it would have been nice to have some feedback and notification with regards to it, since it is, you know, it's a frequently used, you know, it's a public property, you know, that's used by the community as a whole.
Don, the adjacent building is a school, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the church, it's the school part of the Methodist Church. Yeah, so, and that whole street gets used a lot for parking during the day by drop-on and drop-off.
Anything else?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to speak on either of these two items? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Unless council has any further questions. Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Maybe just for our understanding, I don't know, this for our city attorney. What's the consequence of not having a red curb and having a stop sign?
So if you took out the red curb where it is now, or if you've done the study and then decide not to add it, what it does is if there's an accident at the intersection and a claim is made against the city that the intersection constitutes a dangerous condition of public property, then by not following your own study, you can still make arguments in court, but you can't get the lawsuit dismissed at a very early stage. Whereas if you've gone through the process of doing the study and you follow the recommendations of the study, then essentially, at the very first stage of responding to a lawsuit, you can get it dismissed because one almost foolproof defense on a dangerous condition of public property is that you did a scientifically-based study and then adopted the recommendations, thereby as the legislative body, creating a design standard for that intersection or, you know, in other cases, a straight roadway or a curving roadway or a stop sign, a street light, et cetera. So when you have studies commissioned, they're done well, and then you follow the study and adopt those designs, you have what's called design immunity, and the lawsuit can be thrown out very early. Which is why when we go through this process, we do, in working with the engineers, strongly recommend that we do follow the study. Thank you, sir.
And maybe this is a question for TransTech, if you don't mind. Is line of sight from other obstructions considered in the fact in deciding whether a red curb needs to be a certain length or distance? Or?
And Jana, do you want to identify yourself, too?
Yes. I'm sure. I guess it's on. Is it on?
Yes, yes.
Jana Robbins. I'm with TransTech Engineers, and we are the city engineer and traffic engineer for the city. And we prepared the reports. One thing to remember, I just wanted to point out, at Garibaldi and Encinita, as well as the always-stop, we're putting in crosswalks. So the line of sight comes into play additionally, besides the line of sight, is if someone is waiting on the curb to step into that crosswalk, you want people from the other direction to notice that there is someone waiting to cross in the crosswalk. Because this was brought up with the residents, that people do cross here, they take their kids to school up at Longdon, and this is one of the paths they use. So that's another condition that we looked at for line of sight. And then we also look at the tree, the parked cars, you know, when we do our analysis.
Thank you.
And I might add to that, you know, we see a lot of these, unfortunately, these line-of-sight cases at JPIA, and they do present some problems when there is not sufficient line of sight and also if anything's been changed in that regard. So as our city attorney indicated, it could create some potential liabilities for us, and we would lose that design immunity, which is very helpful in a lot of these cases. Gives us a good defense as well, so. Okay. Any other questions on any of, on these two items? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Don. Okay? And if not, no more questions, then I will entertain a motion at this time. As to items I and L.
7I and L, yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve those two items?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Man. I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu.
Yes.
Mayor Chavez.
Yes. Okay, before we move on, I do want to highlight, I think mostly for the public and also regarding these items that were on the consent calendar regarding these traffic calming measures. And basically, point out that, you know, these came in response to concerns from our community members. And I want to mention that through the hard work and dedication of our staff, TransTech, and our Transportation and Public Safety Commission, who spent a lot of time on this and gave us their recommendations, tonight, we've actually approved several key traffic improvements to the city. Just to mention a few of them. We've got the Rosemead, south of Longdon. We're going to have a no-U-turn sign on Rosemead. We're going to have what are called yellow channelizer posts. I think we're all familiar with those posts that go into the street. Apparently, there have been some problems there where people are coming out of 7-Eleven and making U-turns going south on Rosemead Boulevard, across the lines, and creating some pretty big hazards. In fact, there were a couple of accidents there. And so those are some of the improvements that we're going to be making there in addition to refreshing the bicycle lanes. Also, at Garibaldi and Encinitis, as we heard, an always-stop sign is going to go in there. There's been a lot of discussion about that one as well. And so that, I think, is a key improvement. One that maybe is kind of off the map a little bit, Santa Anita Convalescent over at Gracewood. Those of you who are familiar, Gracewood is a street that runs north and south along Live Oak on the east side of the park, sort of over there where we have the pickleball courts now. And they're probably overdue for some improvements concerning handicap parking signs and curb painting. So that's going to be going in as well. And then lastly, on Woodruff, we have several intersections at Woodruff, Encinita, Alessandro, Cloverly, and Primrose. Unlike Garibaldi and Encinitis, those did not meet the warrants for always-stop signs, but staff has put their heads together and has come to the conclusion that there is some additional signage, tree trimming, red curbs that will help visibility in that areas to prevent, of course, any accidents from happening and help with the traffic in those particular areas. And then lastly, on Cloverly, between La Rosa and Lower Zusa, apparently that is a speed area or can be. And so we've been installing new 25-mile-an-hour signs, some pavement legends, installing some red curbs, and some of those cross-traffic-does-not-stop signs in that particular area, all with the idea to calm the traffic for those particular areas. The nice thing is that most of these things, hopefully, will be completed within the next 60 to 90 days. So that's a commitment that we have made on council. I just wanted to point that out to the public. And of course, we're not done. I know there are other areas in the city certainly that could take a look at. And if anybody out there does have a concern, as you can see, we take those concerns very seriously and certainly bring those to our attention if they haven't already, and we will take a look at those in due course. Okay? So with that, we will now now move on to item number eight, public hearing, which there is none. Item nine, unfinished business, none. New business, none. Update from our city manager. Mr. City Manager.
Sorry, Mayor Chavez, thank you. Very briefly, a couple of capital improvement project updates. Today was a milestone day for Temple City Park. The concrete has been poured so that we can start to put in the playground equipment. So in the next couple of weeks, you'll actually see the playground equipment erected up, and you'll start to see that. And then they'll be able to do the very intricate and beautiful rubberized surfacing. If you like Primrose Park's rubberized surfacing and the intricate design, wait till you see this one. So we're really excited about that as well. Also, towards the end of the month, but you may be, members of the public may be seeing now some curb and gutter work being done and sidewalk repair being done throughout the city. That is part of the project that we have with Onyx Paving for our street maintenance, excuse me, our street repaving project. So we're taking the opportunity to mobilize. And in fact, what Mayor Protem spoke to of the next 60 to 90 days, actually, our contractor, who's already mobilized in town, will be doing some of those improvements because they're going to be doing some of those traffic improvements.
By the way, I was elevated from Mayor Protem to mayor. I don't know if you.
Okay, well, that would.
I just give you a hard time. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're still in that.
I'll take my demerits for that later.
Mayor Man is here. I'm Mayor Protem, and it takes a while to catch up.
I'll get there, I'll get there by the third or fourth meeting. I promise.
It must be some of the meeting, because I've been making the same mistakes. Go ahead.
With that being said as well, our first street that we're going to be doing, city limit to city limit, is actually repaving Garibaldi. It is the arterial that gets a lot of traffic, and obviously, you've had some improvements for tonight. So we will be essentially mobilized with our contractor, who is mobilized in part now, and will be able to do the traffic improvements that you approved tonight as well. So we are pleased that that's happening. And then we will be coming back to you as well. We're actually, we're going to go to the Standing Committee first, because we did achieve some savings in the bidding process with the existing street paving, street pavement project that we're doing now. We'll go back to the Standing Committee. We always kind of check in with them about our status with the pavement management program. I will say again, though, that's, while we're going to be able to do that, we are still underfunded for all of our streets throughout the city. It is not enough to repair the streets to a level that is, a PCI level, that's sustainable for long-term integrity of our streets. So even though, so even though you're seeing several projects, which we're happy to do, we are doing that with some creative engineering with TransTech, and we've worked very closely with the Standing Committee to make some decisions about how we repave our streets. But with that, it is still not, we still do not have enough money to make that work. So on the long, in the long term, and even in the short term. So a lot of activity. Also, too, out to bid right now is for Live Oak Park and the quite spectacular spaceship revisioned and renewed. So we're excited about that project as well. So a lot of great things happening. The next meeting as well, we'll be coming to with a couple other capital improvement projects. So this council and the city is truly reinvesting some of our fund balance, along with the ARPA funds that we have that we've now repurposed and re-categorized. So we're going to make some significant investments into the community now and for about the next 12 to 18 months.
You know, while we're on the subject, I just want to make sure or clear that, mostly for the public, that the improvements on Temple City Boulevard north of the high school is not part of, it's not anything to do with those, correct?
No, that is part of the County Sanitation District project. There will be some improvements that are happening with the high school soon that will be, that you'll see some into the public right of way because of how extensive of a project that they're doing. We're working with Cal-American right now and the school district to do the best we can, but that project is not a city project.
And there's no indication that that project that is going on right now in the northern part of Temple City Boulevard, in that unincorporated area, will be coming south? Because it looks like water pipes.
Not that specific project, but some of the improvements that are happening at the high school, obviously, will.
But not the one that's going on right now?
No.
Okay.
Totally separate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number 12, item 12, update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
You're welcome. You're welcome, City Manager Cook. All right. Update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a short update tonight. I know that you have all heard about Senate Bill 9 and the trial court case in favor of five charter cities. I didn't want to give a briefing on that because until the court actually issues its judgment, we don't know exactly what the judgment's going to say. And so we don't know whether this trial court decision will be written in a way that has any impact on any city other than the five that brought the lawsuit. I also didn't want to go too far because tomorrow through Friday is the annual League of California Cities City Attorney Conference. So I'll be getting quite a bit more about that case, both in a formal setting and also informally, because I know some of the litigators who argued it. And then I feel like I can come back and talk really more knowledgeably about that with you at your next meeting. Also, having gone to this conference, I think I'll probably have reports for you for the next four or five meetings in a row. So be prepared to be bored with legalese. Thank you all very much.
I don't know that we're ever bored with you, but the, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was a trial court decision on that. So that really has no precedent.
You know, yeah, it's interesting. The plaintiff, the five plaintiff cities sought both a declaratory relief saying that the Senate Bill 9 did not apply to them, but also injunctive relief, stopping the Attorney General from enforcing it. And that was written as against charter cities. So the question would be that the court denied the request for injunctive relief, saying that the declaratory relief was enough. But if they were to write the judgment in a way that says not valid against charter cities, then we may have more of a discussion. If it says not valid against the five, there's nothing for us to discuss. You're absolutely right, sir.
And so we're waiting for the written decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, what, usually 60 days or so, I think?
That sounds right to me, yes.
So Greg, if the five cities that sued were, I guess they got what they wanted. They prevailed, and it was something that would benefit our city. What would we do then?
There's a couple different things we can do, but like I said, I want to learn a bit more over the next 72 hours before I say anything in public. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports tonight?
No report, Mayor.
No? Okay. Thank you. And we will now move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. I will start to my left, Councilmember Chen. Anything to add?
Nothing really to add, just wanted to add regarding the, thanks city staff as well as TransTech engineers regarding these traffic calming measures. I looked at some of these cause for accidents and based on statewide collision data. I think how that relates to the average residents, not only making our roads safer, but much of that data goes to a statewide database where insurance rates are oftentimes are considered. So it would, if these traffic calming measure will help with those particular dangerous intersection, I hope that it will improve our quality of life here in Temple City and affect our insurance rates as ratepayers. And as for the, the very visible, the, the block that's north of here, there's, I think Don does bring up some valid points regarding line of sight. Once those measures go into place, I think if there's opportunities for TransTech engineers to revisit those issues regarding the line of sight, I think we should always go by the recommendation to, to, well, to continue to the good work that we're doing here. I just wanted to add that part, how it affects all the residents. And again, once again, thanks staff and TransTech's work on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, just, just briefly, enjoyed Mayor Chavez's speech at the chamber luncheon.
Oh, geez, that seems so long ago now. I forgot about that.
It's been a while since our last meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that, that was great. Especially liked the, I thought all the updates were pertinent and I almost want to call it like a mini State of the City too, because it really covered such a, a large portion of what we were planning on doing. So at least everyone who I was able to speak with at the event were very pleased to get that kind of information from, from the city. And, and yes, shout out to Ahi Pokibo for, for the great lunch.
You know that, I forgot, but Ahi Pokibo actually was, opened, I think, was it the second time I was mayor? Must have, was it second time? How long have they been in existence now?
Thirteen?
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Okay, so yeah, or maybe it was the first time I was the mayor and we, he remembered going, we were going to the opening, and they've done well.
They have now how many restaurants? He told us every...
A lot. Over 10, I think.
Wow.
Over 10 restaurants. How many?
Twenty.
Twenty? Twenty restaurants, yeah. They were good.
Yeah, it was great, great to have, have them and, and encouraging the chamber board and the chamber to continue the work they've been doing. Secondly, I do want to also give a shout out for Parks and Rec staff for Earth Day. I did stop by with, with my boys. Live Oak Park is just in general really busy.
A little bit.
I mean, even with the playground equipment, I know we're gearing up for, for the installation, but even with the, what's left of the playground equipment, that, that sees a lot of foot traffic there, so. My, my son was all over that. So, so shout out for that. And, and also just, I want to recognize anyone who celebrates Cinco de Mayo, and I know staff had done a Cinco de Mayo senior lunch. So I just want to appreciate the, the work that goes into things like that. Unfortunately, wasn't there, but I'm sure it went, it went well, so. And also, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms coming up.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you for remembering that. Okay. Councilmember Sternquist? Speaking of Mother's Day?
Mother's Day, oops. Yes. I'm going to ask Don if she doesn't mind coming up here, just, I don't want to steal the thunder, but I attended the Camellia Festival wrap-up on, was it Friday? Thursday?
Saturday.
Saturday. And she had some really good news, so why don't you come up and tell, tell the community and the council?
We will, we will deputize you as an agent to Councilmember Sternquist.
Thank you.
So we don't get in trouble with the agenda.
The Camellia Festival is really excited this year. We are giving away, or we're donating to various youth groups or youth-connected organizations in our community almost $23,000. This is the highest amount that we have ever been able to donate, and to say we are beyond thrilled is an understatement. We're very excited.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. I'm sure they're very grateful also. Ed, our newest council member is going to be part of Foothill Transit. And when are we meeting? Is it tomorrow, Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, so Thursday he'll be...
Is that the one that starts at seven in the morning?
Uh, yes. Well, we, they've moved it. Breakfast is at 7:30, but he doesn't have to really be there until 8 o'clock.
Oh, 8 o'clock.
But he'll have his induction on Thursday to Foothill Transit, so, yeah, it'll be nice to have you aboard. And on that note, we've ordered 25 fuel cell buses. So they will be here within the next few weeks and deploy...
Wait, Foothill Transit did, not us?
Not us.
Oh, okay.
Yes. We, meaning. But so we've gone a little bit away, or quite a bit away from electric right now, to the newest technology, which is fuel cell buses, which have a longer range. But of course, there is a downside because we have to build our own fuel cell stations to provide the...
What is that, hydrogen?
Hydrogen, yes. Hydrogen fuel cell.
So they run on hydrogen instead of electricity?
Instead of electricity.
Interesting.
So that's kind of the new thing. We've learned a lot from deploying electric buses and saw that there are some challenges as I am seen now owning an electric vehicle, but it'll be interesting to see if the car industry follows what they're doing on a bigger front with hydrogen. So we'll see. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Protem, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo something you said earlier about the traffic improvement that we're making tonight. And, you know, great work from staff, great work from TransTech, but, but all because, as you pointed out, because folks actually talk to the city. A lot of these are a result of community members, constituents writing to us, talking to us, and then we do our due diligence and improve the, the traffic conditions. So just want to encourage folks to continue to let us know when things are not working right so that we can look at it and, and study it. So, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for reminding me about the chamber event. It seems so long ago now, but it was a great event, and of course, I have to give a shout out to staff for, for getting me prepared for that. They did a great job with the photos and, and items, and so it was a good, good, good group effort to, to put that together, and it was a good crowd that, that was there. And, you know, I give a lot of thanks to the chamber for organizing that. We do have a, they're actually having another one coming up, unfortunately, I think I'm, is that, is that the weekend we have contract cities or no? I think that's the week I come back from, from JPIA, but Portatino, Senator Portatino is going to be the next speaker, so.
I was surprised because we haven't seen him the whole time he's...
No, because he's not, he's not running for election anymore. No, I'm just kidding.
I was going to say, the whole time we've had him, and I saw him on the agenda. Tom, would you remind the community about the sheriff's meetings, our monthly?
Yes, you mean the neighborhood watch?
No, our...
Oh, oh.
Because that's where a lot of the traffic concerns came.
Yeah, 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 that's a good point. You know, just so everybody is aware, we do meet with our sheriffs on the fourth Wednesday of every month. We've, we've gone back to those early morning meetings at 7 o'clock right here in the community room at City Hall, and we'll continue with those, and that would be a good opportunity for people to voice their concerns about safety issues, not only traffic, but other safety issues in the city. So, so yeah, thank you for doing that, and, and it's a good time to be able to be heard in more of an informal setting perhaps, and usually the captain's there, and we have our dedicated deputies are there as well who can answer questions. So good, a, good time to come to those things. If it gets early, plus we have food, so that's good. TC's Got Talent, I prepared, went to that. Thank you, Adam. And of course, big shout out to Ruby and Chris, I think, that emcee did a great job. Jerry was there, of course, taking photos. Was at La Rosa School this year, and, and they did a good job. La Rosa School's got a very nice, I don't know if that was the first time or maybe the second time I've been in the auditorium there, but it's, it's really, didn't your, does your son go there to, no, no, Emperor, okay. But yeah, that's our Emperor. But it was a good event, and so. Last week I was gone, we had our JPIA Executive Committee Workshop in which the committee actually meets to discuss policy issues moving forward with the JPIA. I will have more to report once we get stuff back from them regarding the meeting, but the, the, the good news is that we're obviously looking, always looking for ways of saving premiums and, and ways of saving money for our member cities. And so we've got some, some good things on the horizon to do that. And then we follow up that, next two weeks, we'll be attending another workshop for our captive Sequoia, which is a corporation in Utah, and of course, we'll see what ways we can do, use to sue, to lower the premiums of that as well. You know, it's, it's becoming very difficult, as you could imagine, I think, as you mentioned with the car insurance, we all know that insurance prices are going up, not only homeowners, but vehicle insurance. Can you imagine what's going on in the insurance injury, industry for cities? It's just going nuts, to the point that it's given, getting to the point where it's difficult to just get companies to write policies to cover cities. And that is one of the biggest challenges that we face right now, not only the expense, but just outright writing policies. And so, you know, our staff at JPI is constantly searching for organizations that are willing to invest in California, and a lot of them, like we've seen in the auto and homeowners' insurance, are pulling out of California for, I guess, obvious reasons, because of the natural disasters that we've suffered over the last few years. So I am pleased to report, though, that we do get a report back from JPI as to the member cities and how we're doing from the standpoint of claims, and I can, I'm pleased to report that Temple City is on the lower end of the spectrum, which is a good thing. That means that staff and everyone in the city are doing their jobs to, to keep things safe and moving along, so, so that's a good thing. I always look for that first. Where's Temple City? And we're in good, we're in good standing, so, good job. I think that's all I have for this evening. Yep. So we'll now move on to item 16, any additional comments on items not listed on the agenda? Jerry? Don, you're the only two. We have, is it, is it Jing in the back? Okay. Been very quiet tonight, Jing. Good to see you again. You've been gone for a while. Good to see you again. Thank you. Okay, hearing no additional public comments.